Okay, welcome everybody to our five o'clock closed session meeting for the city council. If I could please give a roll call?
Mayor Ben Coit.
Here.
Mayor Proton Alafon. Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Loa.
Here.
And Elson.
Here.
We have a forum.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Andrea Alafon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, great. Now is the time for public comments on closed session items only. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on a closed session item? Alright, see you none. I will go ahead and close public comments. Do I need to do a voice?
No.
Okay. And this is the portion of the agenda where I believe our city attorney will be speaking.
So we have three...oh, one, two, three, five matters on closed session. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, which is Reeve Thorsten v City of Palmdale at all. And 4.2, which is conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Ritchie v City of Palmdale at all. 4.3, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Shanay Smith, Patricia Naveras, and Michael McBeahan v City of Palmdale at all. And 4.4, public employment. And 4.5, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation.
Okay.
And we're ready to adjourn to closed session.
Yep, we are. And so I just want to make a note that she's filling in for our regular attorney, William Curly. He is not feeling well today, so we have a stand-in. Alright, we'll go ahead and go to closed session. And we'll be out after we're done. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to our seven o'clock council meeting. I want to welcome you all here and if I could please, anyone interested in doing the pledge of allegiance for us today? Mr. Norris? Let's have you lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mayor?
Please, Mayor, would you please place your hand over your heart or surrender to the greatest country in this world?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I should do a roll call? That's always helpful.
We would have the announcement by the city attorney and then close out the...
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, city attorney, I forgot if you'll do the closeout for our closed session, I apologize.
That's okay. Yes, there was no reportable action from the closed session.
Okay, now, so closed session is officially closed and we've started our seven o'clock meeting and we'll start with a roll call. Mayor Bettencourt?
Here.
Mayor Protem Alarcon?
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Here.
Loa?
Here.
And Olson?
Here.
You have a comment? Okay, I think that we were going to change some items around in order of... I had a request that we move the selection of the planning commissioners to the top of the line so that the people that are here for their appointments, that they can come up and get that done and they can go home for the evening. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
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 I'll make a motion to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Is this gonna come after presentations?
It's gonna come after presentations, yes. But I think we also, I think the city manager wanted to add something to our new, new items for discussion? Is that correct? Our new business?
Yes, Mayor and council, we were made aware of an opportunity to provide a letter of support to Roy Blaine for a federal grant that they are applying for, for transportation dollars. We were made aware of this opportunity after the agenda had posted less than 24 hours ago. So we would like to walk on this new discussion item at the end of the meeting to consider council support for their effort.
Okay, do you want me to guess?
I will move that we find that this matter arose subsequent to the posting of the agenda and that it requires urgent action by this council.
I'll second.
And then can we have a vote, please?
I'm gonna add the item under new business. Okay, let me go ahead and add the item. So that would be a four, so we're gonna add item 14.2? We'll do a voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna start with presentations. We are gonna start with declaring March as Women's History Month and I believe we have a proclamation to pass out. So let me come down and do that.
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Hello, and you're with the Seroptimist Club?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna give you this proclamation, I'm gonna read it to you and then I'm gonna let you explain what your organization does. So this is Women's History Month 2023. This actually started out as International Women's Day back in 2009, 2011. And then around, I wanna say 2074, it became Women's Week. It became official in 1980. I might have my dates wrong on that, but then in 1987, it actually became a month. So now we have Women's History Month. And it says, whereas every March and beyond, Women's History Month provides an opportunity for all to recognize and honor the generations of our past, present, and future trailblazing women and girls who continue to pull forward and help build our city and nation. And whereas, throughout our history, despite the lack of recognition, hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have strived, sacrificed for equality in our community. And whereas, the ratification of the 19th Amendment enabled women to finally have their voices counted in voting booths, paving the way for greater female participation in all levels of government. And whereas, today's women continue to prevail and carry forward the mission of ensuring our daughters have the same opportunities as our sons, women continue to lead groundbreaking civil rights movements for social justice and freedom. And everyone can realize the promise of America. And whereas, let us reflect on the times of today where women and girls are flourishing and prevailing. Let us reflect on how women and girls have overcome and are achieving at the highest levels in history. Let us reflect and pay tribute to the pioneers who paved the way. Let us not repeat the history of continuing to commit to the fight and continue the American vision of a more equal society where every person can achieve the American dream. Now, therefore, I, Laura Bettencourt, Mayor of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to proclaim March 2023 as National Women's History Month. So one thing I want to say is, you're all witnessing our own city's history. Because for the first time, we have Andrea Alarcon and we have a city manager, Rhonda Perez, and myself as mayor. First time in the history, 60 years, that we've had three women at the helm of the City of Palmdale. So you're witnessing history right before your very eyes. And it's not an easy road, so every woman, every sister, every mother, every daughter, thank you for your support and we hope that that continues. And I'm gonna present this proclamation to...
Hi, my name is Barbara Moran. I'm the president of Seroptimist International Antelope Valley Chapter. Seroptimist International has been around for about 100 years. We're actually celebrating 100 years. Based out of Washington DC, out of necessity. The chapter here in Antelope Valley was started in 2019 by a group of amazing women with a fabulous vision that wanted to support our local communities. We all know what happened in 2020 and 2021. However, they did manage to raise some monies. Our focus is our Live Your Dream Awards. We recognize and ask people within our community who are striving to move forward with our mission statement, which is economic empowerment through education is the big focus of Seroptimist. And through that, in 2020, they still managed to raise money, 2021 as well. This year, I'm super excited to share, we had the most applications of anyone in our region, 32 different chapters. We had 49 applications. We awarded $9,000 to four young ladies who are pursuing their education, all of which are single mothers and striving. We also assist and support young girls within our high school atmosphere and education system, 14 to 18 years old or so. And we are looking to grow the chapter. So we appreciate the support and the recognition. We thank you guys so much. I was so thrilled to get the call from Michelle. So we thank you, thank you for the opportunity. And anybody who's interested, we have our meetings the second Wednesday of every month. Follow us on social media. What do we do before social media? I have no idea. But again, we thank you. Thank you so much for this honor.
And what is the name of your Facebook page?
Seroptimist International Antelope Valley.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thomas, did you want to do photos, Thomas, or did you already? Wait, don't go, we have to take your pictures. Come back up. Speaking of Facebook pages, we'll get some pictures you can put on your Facebook page and we'll put some on ours too.
Okay, and we have a second. It says 8.2, a presentation of the City of Palmdale. Palmdale Government Television Channel 27 produced Courtney's Playground Dedication, was recognized for the best community event video as part of the 2023 ACM West Wave Awards. And I believe we are going to watch the video, is that correct? No? That's not correct. Okay, come on up, Thomas. And Armin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The reason why I'm gonna watch the video is because it's 13 minutes long. We had time to conduct the people business, so. We're very proud to present this award, to be getting this award, because it really shows what Palmdale is about. Collaboration between staff, community, and being able to do what we do here at the communications office is shine a light on something that should be shown throughout our whole community. And so one of the things that we did is we entered this award. And Courtney's Playground is very, very popular, it's won another award, as you know. And it really attributes to the staff that we have and what we do with the media that we have. And I want to introduce to you the winner of that particular award. Ms. Armin?
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Mayor Bettencourt, Mayor Protem Alarcon, councilmembers Loa, Bishop, and Olson for this special presentation. While it's always nice to be acknowledged by your peers, and not to brag, but we have received numerous awards and accolades over the years. But this particular one does stand out. If I were to sum it up, it would be two words: collaboration and inclusion. Courtney's Playground was a culmination of many different entities and departments working together with a common purpose. From Parks and Recreation to Public Works, to the City Council, and of course Courtney's Family, I think. Courtney's Family's here? Yes. Courtney's Family, of course, who never gave up in honoring Courtney with this beautiful, beautiful park. It was truly a collaborative effort. For our communications team, I believe our main job is to tell these stories and to showcase the City of Palmdale's wonderful facilities and services as best we can. We would not be able to make that positive impact if we didn't have our team of professionals. Deputy PIO Heidi Carter Escudero, Kristen Shields, Stella Divine Knight, all had an integral role in the production of this video. And we are also excited about having our newest team member, PIO and Communications Manager Thomas Lynch, to join our team now and helping to build the vision for our communications in the future. So as you can see, your communications team is making an impact in our community. And we are producing award-winning, professional, quality content that we all can be proud of. And even more noteworthy, we achieved this thanks to the flexibility of our staff and our collaborators on a hybrid work schedule. It just goes to show what can be accomplished when we open our minds to diverse possibilities, such as Courtney's Playground. This project represents true inclusion. That traditional methods of work and play are no longer feasible. We can accommodate people with different needs than ours, whether physical or mental, and the outcome can be even better than we imagined. So please, subscribe to the city's YouTube channel, City of Palmdale, if you'd like to view any of these videos and our entire archived programming. They are also broadcast on Spectrum Cable Channel 27, as well as on our social media channels. So thank you again for your time and the recognition.
Thank you. Congratulations. I know we're gonna take pictures of you guys in the group, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Can you go now?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. All right, this is our work.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Before you guys, before you guys disperse, can we get one with the family?
Absolutely.
To join? Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to item number nine, waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances. Thomas? Second. Do we wanna do a voice count or do we wanna do electronic? Okay. Okay, and the motion passes. So now we'll be moving on to item number 10, public comments on consent calendar items only. So, do we have speaker cards? No? We don't? Oh, okay. Okay. Just the one? Just one? Just the one? Okay. And it is on consent calendar?
And it's for Jason Zink in 11.3.
Okay.
Yes, my main concern on pulling 11.3 is the city spending $130,000 on 103 signs to wrap them with anti-graffiti wrap. That's over $1,200 per utility box in the City of Palmdale. $1,200 to wrap something that looks like this on a street corner with graffiti wrap that only lasts five years. I paint, me and my friend painted a house, a whole house, for $2,000. So I'm wondering, how can you justify spending $1,200 per signal box? My idea is since we're in this big art renaissance now, Palmdale, why don't we have a contest of local artists and school kids? And they can go out and paint art on these signal boxes at a fraction of the cost and create community pride and engagement. They do, they've already done this in many areas, like Chatsworth. I go down there, Chatsworth, I have friends down there. And I've never seen graffiti after they've painted one of these signal boxes with art. Never have. So, you know, we wanna involve the community, we wanna create community pride. I just don't think spending $1,200 per box is, is a good use of public funds. funds, when we can do something else, something different. I don't think the city of Lancaster spent that much money on their, you know, their bike riding, you know, awareness campaign. I don't think Paris would ever spend that much money on wrapping a box. Twelve hundred dollars. A lot of people are hurting right now. They can't even pay their utility bills. So, I just think you guys need to reconsider this, make it go back into the Art Committee, maybe, and rethink this. Thank you.
Any other speaker cards?
Not on this item.
Okay. Do I, do I want to call if it has not put in a speaker card? Anybody? Okay.
So, I just want to make a comment about eleven point three. We can pull it from the consent calendar before we, before we adopt the full consent calendar, or I can just, we can open discussion on, on the consent calendar generally?
You want to pull it?
Yeah, let's pull it.
Okay, but I was gonna close public comments first. So, I'll make the motion to close public comments, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments from the council. So, do we need to take a vote or just a voice vote?
No, we don't need to take a vote, just close the public comments.
Okay, public comments are closed. Now, we will turn to our council, and go ahead.
Just, we'll pull eleven point three from the consent.
All right. Any, anybody else on the council want to pull an item?
I move to approve the balance of the close of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Nobody else wants to pull any other items other than eleven point three?
Do we have to make a motion on it?
Okay, just want to make sure that I've checked with everyone.
I will put the first and second in, and then call for the vote.
Seems to be a little slow today. There we go. Motion passes. Five yes, zero nos, and zero abstentions. So, we'll go ahead and talk about eleven point three. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carrie Smith, and I'm here to present you with a recommendation to approve an agreement with Feathers Signs and Printing for the utility box wraps, and I'm happy to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for doing the, the, a brief staff report. I think you've contained a lot of the important information, including the draft contract in our materials, but I, I pulled the item only because I wanted to make sure that the public understood that this is just phase one of the effort citywide to wrap these utility boxes. Phase two will, in fact, incorporate some community art components, and I, we had a sort of a conversation about the importance of, of highlighting our local artists and local talent, kids, and so forth. So, rest assured that phase two of the wrapping of the utility boxes will incorporate some, some art components, so wanted to mention that. But this is, this is such an important issue because number, one of our number one complaints we receive from our constituents is, is graffiti, and these are essentially ways to abate graffiti, to deter it, and so we're looking forward to getting these, these wrapped as soon as possible. This has been a long time coming, right? You guys have been working on this contract for a while.
Right, yeah, there's, there's a, a large committee of city staff that are working together on the graffiti abatements opportunities for us to, to kind of curb some of that, and this is one of the components of, of that program that the staff have identified. This allows us to add a little bit, bit of beautification, but also that it's got, they do have a coating on them that allows us to more quickly and, and more easily remove graffiti from the boxes. So, it just takes one of those targets off the table, and it's just a, really, the intent is to reduce the opportunities for graffiti in the community, and as they begin to fail, we can, we can gradually replace them with more of a community-involved effort.
Perfect. Thank you. Look forward to seeing them out there.
Okay, and to address Mr. Zink's concerns about the cost, it's because of materials and labor to install, if you could just.
I have a, to interrupt, yeah.
Go ahead.
Since you're in the business. I have a little bit of experience in this business. I will say that anti-graffiti lamination helps. It's not a cure-all, like when you pressure wash it off, it will leave like a ghost outline, but it is better than the alternative than painting the boxes.
Right.
It is gonna help beautify the city, but did you guys get any other competitive bids by chance?
Yes, we contacted six vendors, and this was the cheapest.
Was it really?
Mm-hmm.
I still, it's, I will still say, it's a, it's a bit expensive. I calced it out by square footage, because that's how it, it goes in that, that business, much like, you know, carpet or tile or paint, but.
Yeah, you know the business obviously better than I do. I, I do know that we did ask for the, the vents, the air vents to be cut out, and so that's probably a little more labor, not my, not my line of work, but we did, we did contact several other vendors, and that was the least expensive one.
Yeah.
And I, the prices, you all know, prices for everything is just not what they were.
It's expensive. I calced it out. It's eighteen dollars a square foot for the vinyl, and then they're charging nine fifty a square foot for the installation, for almost twenty-eight or twenty-nine dollars a square foot for vinyl wrap.
Mm-hmm.
Little on the high side, but that's the cheapest quote you got.
That's what we received.
Absolutely not.
You gotta recuse yourself.
Yeah. But, um, yeah, it's, it's probably tough getting bids in, but would I like to see the city get a better price? Yes. Do I know if it's possible? Doesn't look like it according to our staff. I do like the fact that it has the anti-graffiti element, and it's gonna help reduce that and clean up the city, and, and I would say, let's see how this first round goes and take it from there.
Absolutely. Other questions?
Any other precedents, comments, or concerns on this item?
Seeing none. I'll move to adopt item eleven point three.
I'll second it. And now, we'll call for the vote. Five yes, zero nos, the motion passes. And I think at this time, before we get to public hearings, we're gonna go ahead and do the appointments. We're moving that up so the appointments can go home. Is that where we moved it to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, we're actually going to jump ahead to thirteen point, yeah, item number thirteen, thirteen point one through thirteen point three for appointments for different committees and commissions.
And Madam Mayor, so we're gonna go, we're gonna do the five thirty point one is planning commissioners.
We're, we're gonna.
Mosquito abatement, okay.
Yeah, so we're just gonna do all the appointments at one time.
Oh, we are? Okay.
If, if I have that correct.
Yes.
Okay.
But my point, my point was, when it comes to the planning commissioners, each one of us, as we have historically.
Yes.
Will make a nomination.
Right, so let's part, let's just start with thirteen point one for the Antle Valley mosquito abatement and Vector Control District. I guess we have to call for public comments on each one individually, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, let's call for public comments on the mosquito abatement and vector control district. Anybody fill out a speaker card?
Mayor, we have one comment card, but it only says thirteen. Not thirteen point one, two, or three.
For thirteen, thirteen two?
Then we will hold it till thirteen point two.
Okay. All right, so seeing no public comments for thirteen point one, we'll go ahead and close public comments for that. And the recommendation of the appointment is, who did we have apply for that position?
Mr. Denza, and he's here.
Is he here?
That's what I was gonna.
Would you like to come on up and introduce yourself, sir? We would love for you to do that. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Bowinder Denza, so I thank you for appointing me. I've been a business committee member for a long time. I'm forty-one. I started when I was nineteen years old, and I, I, I plan to give my assistance and help out the best I can.
Thank you. We appreciate you donating your time to this.
Thank you.
It's really an important thing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll move to appoint Mr. Denza.
Do we need to call for the vote verbally, or?
No, I'm going to actually tell you to start voting.
Okay.
If you can start voting at this point.
Five yes, zero nos, the motion passes. Welcome aboard, sir. All right, now we're at thirteen point two. City Council nominations and appointments of one public member to the Palmdale Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, and we will call for public comments, and I believe we have one speaker card.
Jason Zink.
Come on up, Jason.
I volunteered to, for this position, to see if you guys would put me on it. There's no doubt that nobody knows Antle Valley when it comes to land and infrastructure, probably more than myself. If you live in a house that was built in nineteen eighties in Palmdale, chances are, I put up a, a two-by-four and, and hit a nail into it. So, I've been around a long time. I did the backbone in Rancho Vista, all the utility backbone, and serviced all the houses to the sewer and utilities of each house. I've done a lot. I've been in real estate for over thirty years. My family moved here in the early nineteen hundreds, born and raised here. So, I, I know a lot. I don't know if the other people know about the capital improvement list of the city. That's something I would ask them. I would also think that the city should reach out more to people like, you know, the head person that runs Granite Construction would be a good person to also sit on this committee that knows a lot about infrastructure. There's a lot of infrastructure. I was the first person that organized the Four Points Sewer and got the city to do a, a study on bringing a sewer to the Four Points. That was over a decade ago, and nothing's happened. So, you can see how these projects just fester and no movement. And there's no doubt if there were sewers at Four Points today, that that place would boom over there on the east side. There's no hotel, there's no apartments, there's no nothing on the east side of Palmdale. It's ripe for improvement. I gave you guys a map, I don't know if you got, passed it out, but these are two of my recommendations for the infrastructure district. One on the west side and one on the east side. The sewer district needs to be, the sewer line needs to be, go up further than just Four Points Corners, and, because you can't build anything in California anymore unless it's up to sewers, pretty much. And then you have the Amuverdi Flood Control Channel, that we need detention basins that flooded all of Avenue R and Division. I seen cars floated down Avenue R in the storm. Amargosa Channel, it's a regional channel, and it just needs to be part of the infrastructure project, the channel, and it's perfect for a bikeway. And also, the expansion of the intersections at Forty-seventh and S, and Pondo Boulevard and Tenth Street West. Also, Twentieth Street West, I put it at the very top. Twentieth Street West Bridge isn't even on the city capital improvement project list, but you guys collect money from all the homes that are built in that area for it. I went to the, I went to the transportation meeting, the regional transportation meeting last year, and they stated, how many shovel-ready projects are there ready for funding from, for the transportation bill?
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
There was not, you guys had no project shovel-ready. If I was sitting on this board, I will make sure we have shovel-ready projects in the city's projects. I will not sit on.
All right. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is the other applicant here? Would the other applicant like to come up and speak? No pressure. We would like to hear what you have to say.
Hello, Ms. Gordon.
Hello, Mayor Bettencourt. My name's Laura Gordon, and I did apply for this position also. I might not be in real estate, but I am a houser, and I believe we need low-income housing. We need all of that, and that's part of this infrastructure and the financing, so that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Okay, great. And, and both of you have actually sat on committees for the.
And we were both on the GPAC.
Oh, okay, all right. Very good. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments unless anybody else wants to come up and speak to this item. Okay, so the recommendation, the appointment will be for Laura Gordon. And I guess we have to have a vote on that?
Wait a second.
Second? Anybody want to second Laura Gordon, who sat on our GPAC committee?
Sure, I'll second it. I, if, if we can just, I just want to mention how important this position is. It's, this is not just a, a sort of a, a matter-of-process commission. The Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District is the largest of its kind in the state of California. It has a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars in it and has the potential to make significant infrastructure improvements in our city, expanding and upgrading water and sewer lines, and, and, and building much-needed infrastructure so that we can attract development and, and reduce the, the burden on that type of investment in our community. So, this position, from my perspective, is really important, but I'm, I'm happy to support you, Ms. Gordon, and I, I wish you the best of luck, and I hope that you dive into, into the details. It's gonna be a lot, because a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars in projects is, is a lot before you, but we, we trust that you will, you will carry that responsive responsibility amicably, so.
Okay, all right, so now we can call for the vote.
Missing one?
Do we press them again? Are we getting all? All right. So, we have five yes, zero nos, motion passes. Welcome aboard, Laura Gordon.
Congratulations.
Okay. And moving on to thirteen point three, City Council nominations and appointments for planning commission, districts one through five. Do we have public comments? Cards?
No cards.
No cards? Okay. Anybody wishing to speak to this item before we close public comments? Seeing none. We will close public comments for thirteen point three, and I guess each district will go ahead and recommend who they would like to be as their planning commissioner. District one.
I am, I'm gonna recommend David Luzon.
I'll second.
Do we need to second each one, or just as?
No, we're going to, if each one can make the nomination, and then we'll have a first and a second and a vote. So, each district can go ahead and make their nominations.
Okay, district two.
Yes, I was very impressed by the applications received for this, six applications for this, very impressive applications, but Dean Henderson has been on the planning commission for a number of years. He's very dedicated, and so I nominate Dean Henderson. I want to thank all the rest of the applicants.
For district three, I'm going to select Mateo Olivares. But Mr. Alvarez, we've got other plans for you, so don't get disappointed. So, my, my apartment will be Mateo Olivares for district three.
Okay.
District four.
I nominate Jetro Lys.
Okay. District five.
I'm happy to nominate Mr. Christian Martinez. He is a longtime resident of Council District Five. He went to Pete Knight, a graduate of UCLA, and I think he is a rising star. Mr. Martinez, I know you're here, thank you for being here. He's in the middle of trial, and, but made his way here to, to be present tonight, so I'm happy to nominate Mr. Christian Martinez.
Would any of the applicants like to come up and introduce themselves? Would you like, would you feel comfortable doing that? Come on up if you'd like to. Introduce yourself to the council, so everyone knows who you are.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mateo Olivares, so I've been in this city for, for the past twenty-two years. I've seen a lot of growth. It's such a pleasure to see. I would be so honored to be part of the, this committee, to see the more growth. I have been a board member at the Antle Valley Hospital, Board of the Records. On my time I was there, we did a lot of growth. I like to see growth. We, I like to work together as a team and just make the right decisions for the right reason, for the right, for the community, and that's the reason I want to represent this city of Palmdale, to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks want to come up and introduce yourselves? I see someone heading this, two people heading this way. Come on up.
Hi there.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Bettencourt, Vice Mayor Alarcon, Councilman Loa, and Olson. I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bishop. Why am I? I gotta get television. I'm sorry. Anyways, so as Councilmember Loa's mentioned, I've been, I've. Anyways, um so as um uh Councilmember Loa's um mentioned, I've been um I've served on the commission all the way back to two thousand off and on. So I've kinda developed this uh knowledge base and skill set and the city's invested all this time and effort in me. Um with this uh knowledge, I can only really use it as a planning commissioner. So um I appreciate you guys considering me as reappointment and um any other questions?
May I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
The other asset that you bring uh Dean is that uh what is your position with Gavarr?
Oh, I'm president-elect for Greater Antelope Valley Association Realtors, so in December they're gonna um vote me in as president.
And in your position that you have currently, you um essentially do lobbying on behalf of the real estate industry and uh those kind of things and then
True. Um so I'm also chair of a of a um committee called the Local Cover Government Relations Committee. And a lot of what we do is just communicate with um officials, city officials, state officials. Things that um if there's legislation that's coming forward, uh it has to do with uh real estate-related um legislation. Then we come with our position on it and say, well, here's how it's gonna affect our real estate community. And um um a lot of times there will be issues that sound great on the dais or sound great. Um because you're trying to fix a different problem and then when you bring it forward, um we see the other perspective and then we communicate that perspective to you. So one of the things that we're always hot about, and you know every time we have interviews, is point-of-sale mandates. So every time there's an election, we ask you all to come in to interview you. And really, the main reason we're asking you guys to come in for the interview is just to remind you that that's what we're uh very concerned about. A point-of-sale uh mandate is something where if you're in the middle of a real estate transaction, it's something that's required to be um inspected or repaired or done before that real estate transaction can can close. And that just throws a big monkey wrench in things if we if we have point-of-sale mandates, so. Uh every time that comes up, we um come and and talk to you guys and interview you and tell you if it comes up, you know, um here's here's how it's gonna impact real estate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That it? Okay, thank you.
And next up, come on up.
Welcome, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, city council members. Uh I just wanna thank you guys for this opportunity. And thank this community and this city. It's uh blessed my entire family and allowed us to prosper. And I look forward to finally being able to pay that back to the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
How are you guys doing?
Nice to see you.
Um mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, say thank you again for the reappointment. Um I think that uh planning commission is very important because you guys see the vision that we can have here in the city of Palmdale. We can actually be the city of tomorrow where people wanna see growth and development. And this is the best opportunity to do it. You know, we're gonna have some fresh faces on there, but they're also bringing in new ideas. And I just wanna say thank you for the staff because they give us the information that we need to make the right decisions. And from there, we pass it on to you guys so that you guys can tell the constituents that you represent that uh you guys are hard at work with what we wanna see here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
That's exciting. So um I will move to um a- adopt the nominations for council districts one through five and their appointments to the planning commission.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Well, I'll second it.
If somebody's seconded it.
I got it.
Did you get it?
I'll second it, okay. We'll see what the computer says.
You gotta look after the silent one.
Under council, we are doing motions and sentences verbally and just the vote electronically.
Oh. Okay, thanks for the reminder. Okay, so we have motion and a second.
And we have um Councilmember Loa.
Okay.
Sure. You seconded it?
You seconded it?
I originally said
Okay.
Okay. Moderns of technology.
Okay, start voting.
There we go. Alright, motion passes, five guesses. Congratulations, everybody. Okay, so now we're gonna go back on the agenda to where we were. Let me see here. Okay, so we're gonna be public hearing, item number twelve point one. Come on up.
Oh, look at that.
She's got her reminders.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Jasmine Almora. I'm with the Planning Division. The item before you tonight is ordinance number sixteen zero three. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving zoning ordinance amendment twenty-one dash zero zero seven. A request to modify the zoning code and the zoning map to be in compliance with the city's general plan update, Palmdale twenty forty-five. Applicable laws as well as comprehensively amend processes, uses and standards of development. And find that the project is consistent with the program environmental impact report twenty-two dash zero zero two, prepared and certified in conjunction with Palmdale twenty forty-five. As we will discuss throughout this presentation, the primary goal of the project is to implement the vision and ensure consistency with the adopted general plan. Additional goals include complying with state and federal laws, creating a user-friendly document, incorporating best practices and updating standards. And lastly, streamlining procedures and project approvals. The zoning regulations have been revised in a manner that allows flexibility for development and will encompass goals and po- policies of the general plan. Just to give you a visual, this is our current zoom zoning code. And this is what's being presented in front of you tonight. So you can tell it's a significant streamline of the document. The general plan set forth overarching goals and individual policies which include timing for when the action of these policies should be taken. As we will get into further during this presentation, this slide highlights goals provided for access to safe and high-quality food options. A comprehensive update of the zoning code has not occurred in several decades. Although countless smaller zoning updates have been approved through over the years, there are some sections of the zoning code that haven't been updated since nineteen ninety-seven. As such, the zoning ordinance amendment is necessary to implement the vision of the general plan. As well as includes revisions to PMC chapter seventeen point ninety-five, PMC title sixteen, and PMC chapter seventeen point eighty-eight. Which was only reformatted, given that it was recently updated, compass- comprehen- comprehensively updated in twenty twenty-one. Preparation of the zoning code update started concurrently with the general plan update. The process began in twenty twenty-one with initial analysis of identifying major issues with the current zoning code. Through this process, we've had many discussions with major stakeholders, gone through several rounds of review and hours of collaboration with the development community, local businesses and nonprofit organizations. On December twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, the public draft was made available and we continue to work with the stakeholders till this day. Last month, the planning commission unanimously recommended city council adoption of the zoning code update. Public engagement has been instrumental in the creation of the document. We went with stakeholders and the public um to obtain comments and feedback on key points throughout this process. This slide depicts the updated zoning map. The proposed map utilizes the same naming convention as the new general plan. And as listed here today, oh, sorry, as listed here, the title seventeen is broken up in ten different divisions. Division one provides introductory provisions of the code, including purpose and authority, interpretations, designation of zones, the zoning map, as well as an extensive list of definitions. Division two updates processes uh pr- practices to streamline procedures and project approvals. For example, a review authority table has been provided to enhance the usability of the document. Updates have also been made to allow various applications to be approved administratively, which will develop, which will ensure development is processed faster and will be more cost-effective to local businesses. The vi- division also introduces a new administrative use permit application to further streamline permits for certain uses. Divisions three to seven contain all the land use regulations, development standards and design standards of each zone. They're organized in a manner to provide descriptions, permissions tables and development standards and supplemental development standards where not. Depicted here are a few examples of the types of development that may occur within respective zones. Division eight contains the general development standards that apply citywide and also to multiple zones. Uh which includes parking, performance standards, landscaping and transitions between land uses and zones, to name a few. Division nine provides operating provisions for specific uses or activities that require special standards to ensure compatibility with neighboring uses. Uh this division is organized in a general use category, so some examples of these types of uses include accessory doling units or EDUs, junior EDUs, residential facilities, adult-oriented businesses, outdoor dining and outdoor storage. And with that, I would like to pass it over to Megan Tiger.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um I'm Megan Tiger. I'm with the Economic and Development, um Community Development Division Department. Thank you. Please change it for me. Um so good evening, everyone. Um as mentioned by Jasmine, the zoning code update is necessary to implement the recently updated general plan. The general plan was carefully and thoughtfully created over a four-year period. And it included guidance from the community, stakeholders and decision-makers at key points in the process. This input guided the vision for the plan and led to the creation of specific policies related to all facets of the city. Those policies were then used to guide the zoning code update, which led to specific development standards to be utilized for the continued build-out of the city. The draft zoning code was also thoughtfully created over a two-year period and included guidance from the community, stakeholders and decision-makers. Once the document was drafted, it was publicly released in December of uh twenty twenty-two, as Jasmine mentioned. Um in addition to the ability for commenters to provide comments directly to staff via the project website, there were office hours um held in January to talk through issues or concern and gain additional feedback from the community and developers. Many of the developers that you will hear from this evening attended the meetings to discuss this document and provide a valuable feedback on its contents. Um before you this evening is a redline version of the public document, which outlines all the changes made in response to comments received. Some of the changes are minor in nature and include fine-tuning processes, development standards and fixing typographical errors and other references. And some of the changes were drafted to ensure consistency with the general plan policies to make sure they were correctly conveyed. For example, one of the policies in the equitable and healthy communities element of the general plan requires a limitation of drive-through restaurants. And the public draft of the zoning code erroneously interpreted this as a limitation for all drive-through establishments. So as you will see in the document before you this evening, edits were made to only require the distance separations for drive-through restaurant establishments. This particular topic has been discussed in great detail with the members of the development community. And because of these conversations, staff is suggesting the inclusion of some additional language to provide some flexibility in the review and approval of these particular types of uses. Firstly, I want to provide a little bit of context for the drive-through restaurant establishment distance separation requirement. This image conveys something that we as a community see all too frequently. This image was taken from the intersection of Lowe's Drive and Technology Drive and is looking northwest towards an existing drive-through restaurant. This particular site was designed in a manner that does not accommodate the existing restaurant and creates safety hazards on a daily basis for both pedestrians and vehicles. As you can see in the image, the drive-through is intended to queue at the southern end of the building, but frequently spills out into the adjacent parking area, the main access drive into that shopping center, and then ultimately into the public street, which is Rancho Vista Boulevard. In addition, the only way for a pedestrian to access this building from Rancho Vista Boulevard is through a ramp that then exits onto the drive um the drive aisle from the north side of the building, which creates a safety hazard for those pedestrians. The issues of this particular restaurant are further compounded by the fact that there are four such drive-through establishments within the immediate vicinity. And in addition to encouraging access to healthier food options, the updated general plan requires limitations for these establishments to avoid recreation or recreation of this type of situation in the future. So as you can see here on this slide, um we do recognize that there might be some instances where it makes sense to allow a drive-through establishment within closer proximity than what is currently specified within the draft zoning code. Therefore, staff is suggesting edits to the draft zoning code um as shown here on the screen. And um it's a way for the decision-makers to review and approve such an establishment as long as certain requirements are met. So for example, if the proposed establishment serves beverages or items that are not already available in the area, if the establishment will not impact access to or from the site, if there is sufficient queuing, if it's part of a larger comprehensive development, and if it's not causing an extreme over-intensification of this type of use in the immediate area, then the distance separation requirement will not apply. Um with this modification, the review authority for each newly proposed drive-through restaurant establishment would be able to approve such a facility as long as these key areas were demonstrated. So with that, um staff is recommending the city council adopt ordinance number sixteen zero three, approving zoning ordinance amendments twenty-one dash zero zero seven as amended. And find that the project is consistent with the environmental document prepared and certified in conjunction with the city's general plan. And that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam mayor, I I have a question. Uh the first of all, if you could go back to the slide that shows Chick-fil-A?
Trying to make everyone hungry?
Yeah, actually, it's a very popular place and this is not to in any way uh disparage that particular business. But you could tell, you know, its popularity. But you know, um some of the concerns that have been raised is that really there are two such locations that spill over into Rancho Vista Boulevard. And now we're proposing a uh zone ordinance that would affect all future uh drive-through restaurants. There's been discussion, and I believe the language that you just referred to was essentially developed in the last couple of days and completed today. Is that correct?
Um we've been developing it over the last several weeks and it was provided to um you all yesterday or a few days ago. And then it was provided to some of the inquiry developers yesterday as well.
Okay, and uh so one of the requests that um that the developers that are concerned with this is that um this matter be continued in order to uh have additional uh dialogue uh about this particular waiver process. And so my question is, um could we carve out seventeen point ninety-two point zero five zero uh and and approve the balance of the of the zoning ordinance? Cause it appears to me that the uh and and I don't mean, I don't mean to stop seventeen point ninety-two point zero five zero, but rather continue that particular portion and adopt the rest of it. Could we do that?
Based on the agenda language, that's not an authorized action that's agendized, so your option is to I believe the only recommendation on here is to receive public testimony regarding the ordinance, adopt the ordinance approving Z O A twenty-one dash zero zero seven, and find that the project is consistent with the program environmental impact report. So it's not it's not an action that's on here, um so it's not agendized. So I would say that if you don't want to approve the ordinance, your other option is to to basically not approve it. So it's kind of a yes or no situation that we're in here.
All or nothing, basically?
Yes.
But there is an option to approve.
But there is an option to approve this ordinance and then bring back that specific item to be amended at a later date.
Okay, so for clarity.
You could do that. Yes.
Yeah, so what I just want, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what is being suggested and discussed is adopt the draft, the proposed zoning ordinance language, which sets forth the five-hundred-foot distance separation without any opportunity for a waiver.
Right, I think that we would have to, we would have to adopt an amendment to this entire zoning ordinance, is my understanding. So we would, in order to include this language. But my concern is, and maybe I'm not articulating it correctly, but my concern is that because this has just recently been finalized today, basically, that there has not been sufficient discussion with the community, particularly the developers that are concerned about this, to see if there's any additional terms that would include more flexibility in terms of these drive-throughs. And that's my point. And I understand that there are some difficulties in continuing it because there's some practical reasons. There's also, in the balance is the housing element that needs to be certified and other points that have been raised by staff. But the development community is obviously a very important part of our city. And when they raise legitimate concerns, then, and I understand we've had several meetings, including the mayor, Proten, and myself, and others have had similar meetings with the developers. But yet, the language that we're talking about in terms of a waiver is just being finalized today. And I'm wondering if perhaps there's, there's more time could, could adopt more language that would be more satisfactory to the city staff, to the community, and to the developers. That's my question.
Well, I, I believe that we have to actually open this up for public comments.
I was going to suggest it might be helpful to hear from those who've submitted public comments first.
Okay. I just wanted to add clarity that the proposed modification that was up there is a part of the ordinance that is before you tonight. So if you don't like that language, you know, let us know or let staff know before you take an action on it. But the intent was for tonight, for that language to be up for, to go along with the whole ordinance.
We had a briefing late this afternoon in which I was told that we would have to adopt this language to include it in the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
You would have to adopt it as amended with this language.
So you've already included this language in here? I didn't see it.
No, we've already proposed this language as an addition to what you have before you tonight.
Correct. And so the motion would have to be to adopt this amended to include this language that would be added to seventeen point ninety-two point zero five zero.
Correct.
Okay. So, anyway, understood.
I'm going to go ahead and open public comments. Do we have any speaker cards on this item? Mayor, we have six public speaker cards on twelve point one. Robert Valencia.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proten and city council members. I'm Robert Valencia, and I'm here speaking in opposition to the zoning ordinance on a related issue to what we just spoke about, very related. And that is, first of all, I represent a partnership. I'm not a developer. I'm a landowner representing a partnership that owns twenty acres or owned twenty acres at Forty Street West in Palmdale, Oregon, where the Circle K convenience store is and where the Tractor Supply is. Those are the corners of our property. We previously had twenty acres. We sold off the two corners years ago to Circle K and Tractor Supply. And after that sale, the property was rezoned to mixed-use two. Under the proposed ordinance, in mixed-use-two zoning, all drive-through restaurants would be prohibited. And I just learned this last week, and I understand the plan was out since December, but for a lot of reasons, it just wasn't understood by my advisors. So what I'm saying is that that property in particular would not be allowed to have any kind of drive-through restaurants on it. It's a property that already has, by the way, two uses on it that, as I understand the, give you the citation, the ordinance, the Circle K and the Tractor Supply also wouldn't be, have been allowed on that property. So we already have two non-conforming uses on the corner. And so we have a T-shaped left. We have the middle between and then a little bit behind them. And then there's another vacant parcel behind that, twenty more acres. So we're going to kind of be stuck with a T-shaped property that was really sold and developed to date with the intention of having kind of some drive-through retail establishments on it. And we're really looking at a pretty bleak future if we're not able to develop it that way. We do have a solution, an alternative, and that is that we are in escrow to sell the property. We, the developer is here tonight. He's presented the preliminary plan to the city. It's a mixed-use development that includes residential of various densities, commercial and drive-through, drive-through restaurants. If we impose the, the zoning restriction of MU-two that prohibits all drive-throughs in the MU-two zone, it'll end this project. I mean, we're in escrow, but it'll end it probably when you vote. And I'm not, no theatrics there. That's just, you know, the developer is a fast-food developer. So it's, and by the way, I probably didn't clarify this. The development includes the twenty acres behind us. They're also buying that. So it's a thirty-two-acre development on that corner of all mixed use. So I encourage you to please, I mean, I respect the hard work that's been done by staff. I know this isn't simple work. You can't sit down and look at every single parcel in the city and analyze the impact. But we already have two non-conforming uses on this property. And I would encourage the city council to send the ordinance back to staff to review and consider exceptions for how maybe drive-throughs could be built in the MU-two zone if there's already non-conforming use on the property. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Mark McGoy.
Good evening. My name is Mark McGoy. And before I begin my comments, I'm in concert with Rick Norris, who had prepared some notes to read to the city council tonight. He developed some clue and left, and he's asked me to read his comments. Is that possible for me to do that on behalf of Mr. Norris, who's also submitted a card?
He has submitted a card. So you drink? Can you donate his time?
I don't see any problem with it, but it would go to your time. Like, you can't have two turns.
Okay. So these are the comments from Rick Norris, and he's representing Lisa Quaitman, who owns a twenty-nine-acre parcel at Palmdale Boulevard and the Fourteenth Freeway, and a twelve-point-three-three-acre parcel on Palmdale Boulevard adjacent to the Palmdale Regional Medical Center. The general plan and zoning ordinance are arguably the two most important documents that the city produces to guide development. While they are solid documents and very close to hitting the mark, they are not there yet. There are several issues that remain to be fixed. You're all aware of what they are. First, the effort to limit drive-throughs has been soundly resisted by developers and property owners across the city. This alone should give pause. The idea of arbitrarily limiting them is not sound policy and should be removed from the general plan and zoning ordinance, period. Clearly, the unintended consequences have not been fully considered, and that is a dangerous way to enact policy. Second, we have raised the issue of density at the Health and Wellness District as being too high. Nothing has been done. We need to fix that. I am the chairman of P R M C, and we are seeking to become a teaching hospital. When developers that would build the housing we need tell us it's not buildable at that density, I listen. We need to reduce that minimum density, or there will be no housing there, and P R M C will continue to struggle recruiting world-class professionals. This is an easy fix, but nothing has happened. Bottom line, here is what we need to push pause. Get together for some further dialogue with staff and bring back a proposal that gets us where we all want to go. We are ninety-nine percent of the way there, and we probably need only a month or two to get a point where we are all happy. Please delay the zoning ordinance update and general plan amendment. So on behalf of Mark McGoy, in addition to Lisa Quaitman, I represent Dick McLean and the John Warnock Trust that own twenty-six acres on Rancho Vista Division. Malon Ding, who owns twenty-three acres on Palmdale Boulevard at Forty-seventh Street. I'm also working with Gray Kwan, who's here tonight, on a total of thirty-three acres in West Palmdale. And all unanimously have in excess of a hundred and fifty years of experience as owners and developers in Palmdale, have maintained good working relationships with the city and staff. I've been involved in Palmdale for thirty years. I've developed, sold retail commercial properties for over a million square feet of space in that period of time. And I joined Rick Norris in requesting that the council defer acting on this until we have an opportunity to brief council members and staff on the long-term implications that will very seriously detriment the future commercial development in the city of Palmdale. Thank you.
So I just want to be clear. We are, Rick Norris is not here, correct? You read into the record his notes. Okay, just want to be clear. Naveed with Jack in the Box.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. So I'm wearing two hats here. I'm a Jack in the Box franchisee. We own and operate five Jack in the Box restaurants in Palmdale and all the restaurants in Lancaster. And we happen to try to develop new stores. And as Richard said, we're in escrow to purchase his property and develop it. And, you know, I look at that Chick-fil-A picture, and I implore you to put a pause on this because this is going to have the exact consequences of what you don't want to happen. You're going to have the existing drive-through restaurants get busier, and their lines are going to go out the window. They're going to go plug up your streets. We don't want that. You want development. There is a need for fast food restaurants. What's going to happen is this is going to cause fast food restaurant developers to go away. It's going to be too difficult to develop in the city of Palmdale with fast food restaurants, and the existing sites are going to get busier. And they're probably weren't intended to handle all those cars. And there's a need for it. Let's look at the pandemic. The only thing open were fast food restaurants. There's a need for it. So I ask you, please, put a pause on this. Let's try to discuss it further. And as a developer, it's already difficult to develop. And when you throw out these requirements, and I understand city staff and totally respect all the work. It's not easy to plan a city decades into the future. But this is going to have a lot of unintended consequences. I think Councilmember Law was right. If we can put a pause on this to have further discussion, on behalf of myself, I apologize. I didn't know about this until literally a few weeks ago. And as soon as we found out, we jumped in. We've been trying to dialogue with the city staff, and they're great. They've been wonderful in communicating and giving us time to discuss this matter. But I think if we have more time, we put our heads together. There's a lot of intelligent people in the city. There's a lot of experienced developers out there. I think there's some other drive-through restaurant operators are here. They can give some input, and maybe together, we can come up with some standards that work, address the city's concerns about safety and what have you with drive-through restaurants, and see if we can come up with a compromise that works for everybody. So our ask is, if you're willing, put a pause on it. Give us a little bit more time to have more discussion about this zoning ordinance.
Mary Rosas? Mary Rosas? Mary Rosas?
I'm here.
Thank you. I didn't have my mic on, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Benton Court. The wonderful Vice Mayor Alatcon that I've known since she was a little girl. Members of the council, my name's Mary Rosas. My role with Starbucks is government affairs. I cover most of the western region. And my real role is about building relationships with municipalities, counties, and states to figure out what's the best alignment that we can have with the community. So I'm here today to say that I'm really, really grateful to have been on that call when we talked about amending the general plan and making it your, the best guy that you, as an elected official, can have for your residents. The bottom line for us is we're still on a growth trajectory. Our company is really lucky that we are able to offer jobs for anyone that works twenty hours or more. They get 401K. They get Starbucks stock. We pay for their bachelor's degree upfront. So our people are really upward mobility employees. They are the ones that are helping a community get to its next level. So we want to continue to work with you as we grow, but we want to grow with you. So we're here to listen. We're here to be able to provide any kind of solutions. We understand the drive-throughs. It's a challenge for everybody. But we even had a conversation, what does a Starbucks look like if it's not a drive-through? Is that feasible? What do we do together? So I'm here to say, take a look, please. Give us a seat at the table to have a conversation versus voting on something that you just received days ago. Thank you.
Greg Kwan?
Good evening, council. Appreciate the time. My name is Greg Kwan from Our White Properties, and I've submitted a letter to the council applicable to the issue that we're talking about. Our company has been investing in the city of Palmdale for over thirty years. Currently, we have around twelve acres of commercial property in the Rancho Vista area still to be developed, and another twelve acres in the east side that would be impacted by the zoning ordinance restrictions that you're considering today. We also have approximately a hundred and eighty acres of residential land that is entitled and/or has potential to build over one thousand one hundred and thirty homes. So from a residential developer's perspective, we are concerned that these restrictions would hamper or eliminate a lot of potential commercial development that would, that would provide the services that need, we need to support the additional homes in the city. And I know, we understand the city's been striving for more residential homes to support all the new jobs being created by the aerospace industry as well as the new homes for existing residents wanting to change. So of specific concern, like you've been hearing from all of my other colleagues over here, is the five-hundred-foot restaurant drive-through restriction. It would eliminate a lot of new development and discourage many desirable operators from coming to Palmdale and/or expanding in the city, like you just heard from Mary. We appreciate the staff's willingness to try and work with us in attempting to create a minor permit, minor use permit process. But this process has many potential issues of concern, such as cost, uncertainty, and time that would affect developers' ability to produce future commercial projects. The exception staff, the exceptions that staff is proposing to the council, and also, like Megan mentioned, she shared with myself and some of the other developers that were in the meeting last week, they try and carve out what would be